Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the city council for October 28th. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, item number one.
Petition of C.C. Station Lofts LLC for garage license located at 124 Montello Street, Part 300, in City Clerk's office, October 1, 2013. Hearing assigned for October 28, 2013. All paperwork is on file, and the fire department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please step forward to the rostrum and give the clerk your name.
Sure. My name is Jason Korbe, K-O-R-B. I'm the principal of Capstone Communities LLC, the developer of the project. I know there's a big game going on tonight, so I don't want to take up too much time. I have not appeared in front of this body as a whole. I think I've met with most of you individually. I thought it'd be a great opportunity to give you a two-minute update on where the project is. As you know, this is what the building looked like about a year ago. Since then, we've received funding from the state. The city has also contributed funding. We've been working really diligently to complete the building by December 1st and occupy it by December 1st. Here, as you can see, is a picture of what it looks like today. I'm sure all of you have walked by it and seen it. Construction's been going great. We're ahead of schedule. We've leased 14 of the workforce units. They've already been completely leased. We've leased four or five of the market rate units, with four or five more that we plan on taking deposits on in the next, probably, one or two weeks. We have 25 units, so that pretty much is the entire building. So, we're doing very well. I think there is a strong market for both market rate housing and workforce housing. All of the people that we have so far have jobs. They work in the city. I think there'll be great people to have living in the downtown and really contribute to the downtown. Here's just a picture of the inside of one of the units on the fourth floor. You can see that we actually preserved the original flooring. We were able to save about 85 percent of the flooring on floors two through four. We've exposed beams. We've exposed columns. We've worked with the National Park Service to really bring out the history of the building. The windows actually are precise matches of the historic windows as well. There was a long process that we went through. We repointed 100 percent of the building. I think if you walk by it, though, you'd see that none of it looks like new mortar. We spent a lot of time working on making sure that it was appropriate for the building. This is just a picture of the model unit that you can see. And I invite any of you to come by. I know some people are going to be taking a walking tour tomorrow. You're absolutely welcome to join us, and I'd be happy to take you through the building. So, we're here today because of the garage, though, specifically. The garage is located on the other side facing the railroad tracks. It was the one-story office building that you'd probably seen. We were required to keep it by the park service because it is a historic building, and we thought providing covered parking would be a great amenity to the building. So, we are required by mass state law to be here and request approval from you. The garage will be well lit. There'll be a security camera in the garage. There'll be mechanical ventilation in the garage as well that will go on when carbon oxide hits a certain level, as required by law. The fire -- we've been working with the fire department, the plumbing inspector, to make sure that it's up to code. You have a plan in front of you. This is actually slightly different than the one you have in front of you. If it's okay, I'd like to submit this updated plan. It's the same number of parking spaces. We discovered a column. We should've known this before I submitted it, but we didn't. A column in this location over here. This is, by the way, to orient you. This is Lincoln Street. This is West Railroad Avenue up here. We originally had a space over here in bike racks over here. We've moved the bike rack. We've swapped this parking space with the bike rack because of this column location here, so cars wouldn't be able to maneuver into the space. We still have the same dimensions that are required under the zoning code. We just moved this parking space across. So, I do have copies of the revised plan. I don't know if that's something that you'd like to see.
If you could give them to the clerk, please.
Okay, sure. I also do have the rebuttal notifications as well as required with the return receipts, so I can submit those, too.
Okay, great. If you could just give them to our clerk here. Thank you. Counsel of DeNapoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, sorry. Good evening, Jason. It sounds like you've done a marvelous job. I mean, you're ahead of schedule, and the building is fully rented, right?
That's our hope, yeah.
Great job. Tomorrow, the governor's coming. We'll have a grand tour of your building with the project going across the street also, so I'm looking forward to that. And congratulations, and we'll get this garage license for you so you can get all those automobiles in there and get the people in there, and we'll have a grand opening party, right?
Absolutely. And thank you for your support as well.
Absolutely. You've done a marvelous job. Commend you for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Brophy.
Thank you. Now, was the parking -- good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. The parking garage, was that originally part of the plan, or was that another use originally?
It's always been a part of the plan. We originally actually proposed to have two holes in the garage to provide for ventilation. The plumbing code actually specifically states that the openings of an open garage -- we intended to have an open garage -- had to be the walls and not the ceiling. So, the only change to the garage was that we filled in the holes in the roof, which actually provides for a better garage. And then we added mechanical ventilation, so.
How much onsite parking do you have now with the garage and with the other spaces on the property?
Good question. So, we have 27 onsite spaces, 25 units. We also require to lease six spaces on the street, on West Railroad Avenue. So, we have a total of 33 parking spaces.
And that's through the parking authority, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Counsel Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Korbe, good evening. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for investing in Brockton. One of the questions I had, Jason, I've supported you since day one, and I know when we first had a private meeting to get familiar with the project, you indicated that on the first floor, you were going to do some type of historic sports memorabilia Stalin Dean motif. Is that still?
Yeah, I'm actually really glad you've asked that. With me tonight, actually, is Lachlan McKinnon. Lachlan is with the Boston Architectural Center. We've hired Lachlan to find historic memorabilia.
Awesome.
And Lachlan's actually found a lot of things. People have donated historic memorabilia. He's talked to Jim Benson. He's talked to other people. Have donated items in the city. We've actually created a waiver, so if people would like to loan things to us, they don't want to give it to us, they'd like to loan it to us for, you know, four days or four years or 40 years, they can do that. And whenever they'd like to have it back, they'll be given it back. We're talking to Chick Knight as well to try to find more memorabilia. We've saved an old sign as well that we found in the building. Unfortunately, there was not a lot left in the building. But I'd actually like to use this opportunity to speak to everybody here, as well as people on TV, to say, you know, if you do have things, we'd love to be able to borrow them or buy them or display them. It's very, very important to us.
Excellent. And it's still going to be in the lobby area?
It's actually going to be throughout the whole building.
Oh, it is?
So, we found -- so, Lachlan has found images of Brockton, so it will not just be about the building itself. We found old images of Brockton High, of the downtown during Christmas, and we're actually going to blow all of those up and frame them and put them in the building.
That's neat. Great. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Anybody has any ideas, too, we're happy to, you know, hear them.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm sure if you have lunch at Petty's Market, you'll find some. Counsel Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Mr. Korbe. It's good to see you here. Congratulations on just a fantastic project. It's been great working with you. Unfortunately, I'm in Boston tomorrow, so when I be a part of the tour, I would love to set something out with you as an aside. I have a question about your marketing. I know you had sent out a marketing document, if I remember correctly, some time ago, if I remember correctly. But can you just talk through what was your marketing strategy to get your building occupied so quickly?
Sure. So, the number-one marketing technique that we used were the banners, actually. I think something like 55 to 60 percent of people calling us or emailing us came directly from the banners. So, we have a banner positioned facing the railroad tracks, so that's been fantastic. Also, Montello Street, there's a lot of traffic. We've dropped off flyers at the Health Center, at the YMCA, at the mayor's office. We've advertised in minority newspapers and bilingual newspapers. We've really tried to make an effort to hit as many different populations as we possibly can as well. I think we've advertised in the Enterprise. I'm not 100 percent sure about that. There was an article written, though, that we worked with the Enterprise on to try to get the word out. So, everybody, actually, who's applied to live in the building is from Brockton that we've accepted. We had a lottery as well that I believe we had about 700 applications in the lottery for the 14 workforce units. Most of the people out of that lottery were from Brockton, actually, that we accepted.
And then, any future plans for additional development in the city?
I would love to develop again in the city. I'm currently looking for a project, so I haven't found one yet. I love historic restoration, rehabilitation, so again, if you have -- I'd love to continue building on the relationships I have here, so.
That's great. Again, thank you for your work and.
Thank you. And thank you for your support.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of the project, the garage license? Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition to the garage license? Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed.
Questions on granting?
Questions on granting by roll call vote? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeBois.
Yes.
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 Tenenly affirmative.
The garage license is granted. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item number two.
We have the petition of General Realty Trust for a garage license located at 10 Pinkham Street, in City Clerk's office, August 1, 2013. Hearing assigned for August 28, 2013. All paperwork, necessary paperwork on file. Fire Department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please step forward to the rostrum and give your name to the clerk.
Hi, my name is John Renicki. I'm co-owner of General Realty Trust. We purchased a property on 10 Pinkham Street right around in -- it was April. The property was kind of vacant for two to three years. It was completely rehabbed, inside, wiring, doors, paint, offices. We had it all taken care of. Currently, it can park about 28 cars. It's only 4,000 square feet. It's right across the street from Cape Cod Cafe.
There you go.
It's all new heat. Everything else is put in it.
Counsel Stedensky.
I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, I'm the ward four counselor. I met with people who planned on running a business there, and you were -- neither of them. Are they here anywhere?
The people that are leasing it?
Yeah.
They were supposed to be here.
Okay. I have stipulations that they have to agree to. We have to work on this, and I spoke to my phone. I would ask that we move this to the end of tonight's meeting and give them a chance to get here.
Motion made and seconded to continue the hearing to the end of the meeting. All those in favor, opposed? We'll continue this at the end of the meeting. Hopefully, they'll be here. Item number three.
Petition of General Realty Trust for a garage license located at 967 Montello Street, in Clerk's office, July 22, 2013. Hearing assigned for October 28, 2013. All unnecessary paperwork is on file, and the fire department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please give your name to the clerk.
My name is John Renicki, co-owner of General Realty Trust on 967 Montello Street. We just recently purchased that building, too, and cleaned it up, cleaned up the whole area. We are currently going to be changing tenants in the building. There's a -- the old tenants that were in the building when we bought it are still there, but we're currently -- we want to be getting new tenants. It's going to be a three-unit, three separate units for three different businesses.
Counsel Stedensky.
Are you here for one license?
Two.
No, no. For one license at 967.
Correct.
With Bass 10 Pinkham.
One license.
You're here for one license.
Yep.
And there are going to be three different businesses in there.
Correct.
And are any of those people, have you had contact with any of them?
Yeah, we're just signing leases with those people.
I'm afraid I was unable to meet with -- I had no knowledge of this particular one at all. I'd make a motion this time to move this to the next regular council meeting, and I will give these gentlemen my card so they can give it to their lesses, and they can meet with me so we can run things properly.
Second. Could we do both of them next time?
Yeah, might as well.
The motion right now is to -- motion's made and seconded to continue this hearing to the next city council meeting. All those in favor, opposed? This will be continued to the next city council meeting. Would you like to counsel on item number two? Well, at the end of the meeting, we'll have to reopen that hearing. Item number -- number four, please. Yeah, we will at the end.
Clerk, item number four.
Petition of chick-to-chick DBA, chick-to-charity for a secondhand articles license at 21 Torrey Street.
Time having arrived, the hearing, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, please.
Dwayne Williams, sheik-to-sheik, address, 1 Woodyer Lane, Easton. This is Janelle Palumba, also 1 Woodyer Lane, Easton.
And you are seeking a secondhand license for 21 Torrey Street?
Correct. We currently have a secondhand articles license at 165 West Gate Drive. It is a 3,000-square-foot secondhand clothing store next to Warren Jewelers and Lowe's behind Market Basket. We signed a one-year lease. We moved in the beginning of January. Our lease is up December 31st. That current location was an old Papagino's. It's 3,000 square feet. What we learned in the first month or two months of being open is that we didn't have enough space to meet the demand for the secondhand clothes. Currently, our Brockton location only sells women's clothing, shoes, handbags, and jewelry. We have another location in Stoughton, which does have men's clothing and children's clothing in addition to the women's clothing. So, our goal is to enlarge the space, which obviously we can't do at that location, so we've signed a lease at 21 Torrey Street in Brockton, right next to Lens Crafters and Price Right in the same plaza as Ocean State Job Lot. That location's 9,600 square feet, so our goal is to meet the demand of the local market to have men's, women's, and children's clothing together. So, what we are proposing is to, according to the city clerk, turn in our license as the license is specific to a location. So, we want to turn in our license at 165 West Gate Drive and apply for a new license at 21 Torrey Street in Brockton for the same purposes.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just hadn't had the contact from you, and you at least answered one question. So, 21 Torrey Street is the Ocean State Job Lot?
It's the same plaza. It's Points West Plaza. The space we're looking at used to be Lappin's Auto Parts. It's on the corner of Torrey and West Street, so it has the green and white awnings. I believe it's facing Dunkin' Donuts.
It actually faces Our Lady of Lord's Church.
Okay.
And what kind of hours do you operate?
Our hours are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, 12:00 to 5:00 on Sunday.
12:00 to 5:00 on Sunday, because there is -- you'll have a little overlap with Our Lady of Lord's Church, and I know that on Sunday. And what time on Saturday?
10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday are our current hours in Brockton and Stoughton.
Okay. And you're in currently how many square feet?
We're in 3,000 square feet at 165 West Gate Drive, so we'd be moving to 9,600.
And where do most of these secondhand articles come from?
They all come from our consignment store in Foxborough. We have a consignment store in Foxborough, and we allow the people dropping off their clothing. If there's something that we can't accept for consignment, we give them the option to be sold in one of our two charity stores in Brockton or Stoughton. In exchange for people donating their clothing to the store, this year, we've donated a little over $20,000 to local charities. Each month, we donate money to a local charity based on the volume of donations. Our first month in operation, we donated to Penelope's Place, which is a domestic violence shelter in Brockton. We've also donated money to the Brockton Boys and Girls Club, as well as the YMCA and a number of different local charities, food pantries.
And did you say that people drop the clothes off there, or?
It's all dropped off in Foxborough.
In Foxborough? There is no drop-off at this location?
Um, no.
We don't get donations in Brockton, to be honest.
Okay.
We are getting a few in Stoughton.
Okay. I mean, actually, I'm looking -- I'm looking that there isn't, because we've had issues with some of the bins and all around. I mean, that's what.
We don't get any in Brockton.
Yeah, we've, you know, we would -- we have accepted, maybe two or three people have said, "Can I give you some clothes?" We say, "Sure, thank you," but I think that's only happened maybe literally two to three times.
But you have no setup for people to be dropping things off, because my fear is that people then just leave it outside.
No.
No, no. We don't -- what separates us from a typical, like a Savers or Salvation Army is we're not getting clothing from metal donation bins outside that are left out in the rain and the snow. 100 percent of the clothes that we receive are clean, washed, folded, brought into us. Our current consignment list in Foxborough is about 8,500 people that primarily live Foxborough, Easton, Sharon, Canton, Plainville, the towns surrounding our store in Foxborough.
So, you don't really consider yourself a thrift store, like the Salvation Army building in the mall?
We're not collecting, we're not buying clothes out of donation bins like a Savers. They purchase clothes from donation bins. We do not purchase clothes.
Yeah, if it has any stains, if it has any grease, odor, smoke damage, anything like that, we have to give it to Planet Aid.
We give it to Planet Aid. Yeah. Yeah, we have -- we set up with Planet Aid to anything that we feel doesn't meet our standards, we donate to Planet Aid.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of your lease, how many parking spaces do you have there? Because it's a pretty -- I know it because I'm a communicant of Our Lady of Lords, and I know there's a lot of parking on that side. It's also a former Japanese steakhouse that's been converted now. I think it's going to be a Jamaican restaurant as well there. So, how many parking spaces do you get under your lease?
We're running out of parking where we currently are.
No, I mean, when you go to.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number. The landlord is Bricksmore Properties. There's obviously, there's at least 30 parking spaces in front, and then, of course, on the other side by Price Right and Job Lot, there's obviously several hundred spaces over there. But directly in front of the space we're leasing, there's at least 30 spaces there.
Okay. Because I do know on Sunday, a lot of people, specifically the seniors and the elders that go to church, they park on that side because it's closer to walk to the church across the street. So, just FYI on that. But I know for a fact you've done well at the West Gate, and I would expect you're going to do well in Torrey as well. So, I appreciate you coming before us. And Mr. Cruz is the Ward 1 counselor, and that's located in Ward 1, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel. Anyone else in favor? Please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Anyone else in favor? Seeing no one else in favor, declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? Anyone here in opposition? Please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing no one in opposition, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Question is on granting the secondhand article license by roll call vote? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeNapoli.
Yes.
DeBois.
Yes.
Ienery.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Eddy.
Yes.
Stewart.
No.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Not any affirmative, one of the negatives. The license is approved.
You're all set. Report to the Audit Committee for its meeting of October 21, 2013.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report to the Finance Committee for its meeting of October 21, 2013.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor recommending an appropriation for unappropriated estimated receipts, the general fund, $50,000 to general fund revenue subsidy of the Park Recreation Enterprise Fund, and from unappropriated revenues of Park Recreation Enterprise, $50,000 to Park Recreation Enterprise Personal Services other than overtime.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending appropriation in the amount of $4,500 from unappropriated estimate receipts to auditor's office fund deficient recovery in order to provide funding to eliminate minor deficits in several special revenue funds prior to setting the tax rate.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending appropriation in the amount of $300,000 from unappropriated estimate receipts to stabilization fund.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the city auditor certifying that the balance of the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriations as of October 9, 2013, is $300,592.87.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the chief of the fire department requesting a total transfer of $207,180 from ambulance receipts account for department equipment for one, a request for $157,180 for the second phase of the fire department computer-aided dispatch system, which will be integrated with the present police computer aid dispatch system, and two, a request for $50,000 to be used to purchase a new incident command vehicle for the platoon deputy chief.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending that the city council authorize the approval of a solar net metered credit agreement between 126 Grove Solar LLC and the city of Brockton. This agreement is for the purchase of solar power from solar plant, which will save the city in electricity costs.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have an order of appropriation of $151,000 for $119.70 from the Mass Executive Office
Accepted and placed on file.
We have an order of appropriation of $151,000 for $119.70 from the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, 911 Department Training Grant, and an EMD Regulatory Compliance Grant, the city of Brockton Police Department State 911 Training Grant, and EMD Regulatory Compliance Grant Fund. In council, October 15th, 2013, refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will clerk please call the roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeNapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Eddy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
None in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of $5,187.70 from the Mass Association of Health Boards Plymouth County Region 5 Emergency Coalition Grant Fund, the city of Brockton Board of Health, Mass Medical Reserve Corp. Grant Fund. In council, October 15th, 2013, refer to the committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will clerk please call the roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeNapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Eddy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
None in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Order that the city council hereby accepts as a granted gift from the Brockton Library Foundation in the amount of $50,000 for improvements to the West Branch Library located at 544 East Avenue, Brockton pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, subsection 53A. In council, October 15th, 2013, refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
The question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will clerk please call the roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeNapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Eddy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
None in the affirmative.
The order is adopted. Counsel Ioneary.
And I move for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail on item number 24.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Order that the city enter an agreement attached hereto with the Mass Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development and accept therefrom a grant in the amount of $11,66,361 as part of the Commonwealth Growth Districte Initiative established pursuant to 11 of Chapter 238 of the Acts of 2012 for the purpose of funding the second phase of an economic development project within a block of land in downtown Brockton, Mass bound by Center Street, Montello Street, Main Street, and Petronelli Way. In council, October 15th, refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will clerk please call the roll?
Brophy.
No.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeNapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Eddy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
None in the affirmative, one in the negative.
The order is adopted.
Resolve that the mayor...
Counselor DeNapoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for reconsideration in hopes it doesn't prevail on item number 25.
Second. Motion made and seconded for reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Resolve that the mayor, chief financial officer, and superintendent of buildings be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss the condition of city buildings and properties and to discuss establishment of a long-term plan for maintaining such properties. In council, October 15th, 2013, refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will clerk please call the roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeNapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Eddy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
None in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Resolve that the DPW commissioner and a representative from the city's outside electrical service company come before the finance committee to discuss and outline the repair, replacement, and installation process relative to the streetlights located within the city. In council, October 15th, 2013, refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Mr. President.
Counsel Sullivan.
If I could, uh, just, uh, just to remind my colleagues on the council, last week when, uh, representatives from the city were here, they indicated dollar amounts to install, um, new lights within the city of up to $1,300. I think the range was 700 on the low, 1,300 on the high. I'm going to ask for, uh, proof of that. Reason being is, I know for a fact another local municipality that did the streetlight acquisition is only paying 200 to 300 dollars to add a light per pole. So I'd like to see a cost analysis and a breakdown on that. So I just wanted to inform you that I will be requesting that through you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will clerk please call the roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeNapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Eddy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
None in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Resolve that the building commissioner and the supervisor of the animal control department come before the finance committee to discuss the condition of the animal control building located at 446 Court Street. In council, October 15th, 2013, refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will clerk please call the roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeNapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Eddy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
None in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Resolve that the building commissioner and the supervisor of the animal control department come before the finance committee to discuss the condition of the animal control building located at 446 Court Street. In council, October 15th, 2013, refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will clerk please call the roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeNapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Eddy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
None in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Resolve that the building commissioner and the supervisor of the animal control department come before the finance committee to discuss the condition of the animal control building located at 446 Court Street. In council, October 15th, 2013, refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will clerk please call the roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeNapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Eddy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
None in the affirmative.
The order is adopted. Counselor Ioneary.
(laughing) Are you trying to move me onto the West Side, Counselor, Mr. President? Okay, I'd like to move item number 29 under the, uh, under suspension of rules and act on this tonight. And Deputy Chief Williams is here tonight if anybody has any questions on this.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to take item 29 tonight and act on the suspension of the rules. All those in favor? Opposed? We will act on number 29 after the clerk reads it.
An appropriation totaling $207,180 from ambulance receipts fund to fire department capital department equipment, $157,180 for the second phase of the fire department computer-aided dispatch system, which will be integrated with the present police computer-aided dispatch system, and from the ambulance receipts fund to fire department capital department equipment, $50,000 to be used for the purchase of a new incident command vehicle for the platoon deputy chief. Though they will be sharing some of the same components and hardware, they will still have their own separate dispatching software. We have a letter from the chief financial officer stating that this evening Deputy Chief Williams has indicated that he will request the city council to suspend the rules to approve in one evening the request to appropriate $207,180 from the ambulance receipts fund to purchase a command vehicle and the second phase of the computer-aided dispatch system. The reason for this request is to accelerate the acquisition of this equipment. Uh, it has been, the CFO has provided certification for the appropriation and does not object to the adoption of the appropriation in one meeting respectfully submitted. John A. Condon, chief financial officer.
Counselors, Chief Francis is out of town this evening, and we have acting Chief Williams here and Deputy Fire Chief Galligan. If you have any questions, you may remain seated, counselors. Counsel Brophy.
Thank you. Chief, how are you?
Evening, Counsel.
Um, could you explain, uh, what the new incident command vehicle, what, what purpose